Can I entertain a motion to come on a closed session?
I might.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Start a vote, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
And Mr. Early? Did you get Mr. Early? Mr. Early, can you hear us? And I vote yes. Can I ask all the supervisors to certify certification resolution whereas the Carroll County Board of Supervisors convene in a closed session this date pursuant affirmative recorded vote and on the motion to close the meeting in accordance with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Whereas Section two point two dash thirty seven eleven D of the Code of Virginia will card a certification by the Board of Supervisors that such closed session was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. We went under A three, A six, A eight, and A twenty nine. Now therefore be resolved that the Carroll County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were heard, discussed, or considered in a closed session to which his certification applies. And all such business matters as were identified in the motion by which this closed session was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting to which his certification applies. I'll start with Mr. Moore.
I so certify.
Mr. Collins?
I so certify.
Mr. Bryant?
I so certify.
Mr. Horton?
I so certify.
Mr. Early?
I so certify.
And I so certify. Okay, next on the agenda is invocation and pledge. I'll ask Mr. Bryant to release please.
Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to be here to make decisions and for the county and the citizens, and we just ask that you just help us in that manner. We give you all praise and glory. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next on the agenda is business recognition, Virginia five hundred. Let you come up. Mr. McCraw, please. Mr. Collins, you present it?
Let me get my notes here. We've had a little bit of a hard time getting Stephen here to receive this. Come on over here, Stephen, Stephen. They're busy, and that's a good thing. We love our local businesses. We appreciate everything that you do for our community. And Virginia five hundred was started in nineteen seventy by Reed McCraw. Took over January nineteen eighty seven, Phil McCraw. Phil served as a member of the Board of Supervisors here for, was it eight years? I think it was eight years. And then Stephen and his wife Mickey have had it since two thousand and fifteen. Stephen, I jokingly say he's my supplier. He's my supplier of RC Cola. So, we appreciate that. There are just items, Stephen, that you guys have that you can't get anywhere else. That's the only place my mother will let me buy cornmeal. So, that's her favorite. If you're passing through and you haven't tried them, you now have, for the first time, twenty-four hour fuel. Because you can pay at the pump. These guys are, you may be the only one, you're the only one I'm aware of in the county that does full service. You still pump everybody's gas.
Yep, sure do.
That's, they won't even let me pump it when I go. Maybe that they don't trust me, I don't know. But what this says, Stephen says, it's certificate of appreciation, Virginia five hundred, for your dedication to the citizens of Carroll County. We value your business and your contributions to the community, and we appreciate you all. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Board. And I don't know if it appropriate or not, I'd just like to say that my family's been blessed to be in this community for all these years, fifty-four now, fifty-five coming up. And it ain't always been easy, but we've always had the support of our community, this county, this state. And we're just grateful to do what we do, and we thank y'all for the recognition.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Crystal, can you get a picture? Thank you. Appreciate it, buddy. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tea, Danny.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have Mr. Dave Leffler from VDOT, please.
Hello, young man.
He's gonna speak.
I just wanted to come in and thank you guys for the last six years. The end of this month, I'm retiring. Six years here, I'll have twenty-three years in the VDOT. Brad will be the new Assistant Resident Administrator, and you'll have Will keeping everybody in line. But I just wanted to just go and say thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good hands.
Thank you.
We have you some more.
As a brother, it's an honor. Appreciate all you've done, and on behalf of the presented the Charles Leffler Retirement Award in recognition of twenty-two years of service with the Virginia Department of Trench Station. Thank you for your service and the citizens of Carroll County.
Thanks, sir.
And you said Will was returning next month?
No.
See you, Will.
Thanks. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Appreciate it. Yeah.
Jody, if you can hear me, you can take my number off speed dial. Hey, Dave, I was gonna say the exact same thing. Thank you, my friend. You've been a wonderful liaison for VDOT.
Okay, next on the agenda is Jacob Holmes from AUP.
Hello. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Jake Holmes with Appalachian Power. Been with the company about a year and a half. Recently, I was, well, first let me say I'm the External Affairs Manager for your region, for your area. I'm based out of Forest Southwest, but recently I picked up the twin counties. In a previous job, I got to work in Grayson and Galax a little bit. Hadn't been to Carroll quite as much, so I'm looking forward to being over here a little bit more. I just want to say, if you guys have any issues, anything that pops up, please reach out. I've got some business cards with my cellphone on it. I'll leave with the folks here, but just appreciate what you do. I serve in local government back home, too, and it's, I know it takes a lot of time and effort, so I appreciate that.
I appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, next on the agenda is Citizens Time. Looks like anybody signed up. Do you want to speak? Okay, moving on. Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes. I entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion? I have a second? Second. Okay, I'll start to vote.
You don't know which one?
Start the voting with Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yeah.
Okay. Next on the agenda is consent counter. Entertain a motion to approve the consent counter that you received?
So moved.
They have a motion? I have a second?
Second.
Okay, start the voting. Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yeah.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next on the agenda is invoices. I'll entertain a motion to approve A and B together or separate. I make a motion, we approve A and B together? Okay, have a motion? I have a second?
I second that.
All right, I'll start the voting with Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yeah.
And I vote yes. Okay, moving on to new business, Board of Equalization. The Commissioner, I'll let Mr. Watson speak on this.
Okay, we are currently going through the process of a reassessment. And during that time period, once the assessment's done, there is a appointed Board of Equalization. And the Board of Equalizations, their duty is to look at, and I'm gonna do my best ability to explain this, but look at the accessory values that's presented toward the property. And it gives the citizen of the property the ability to discuss their property and see if it is appropriately assessed. Currently, they receive a hundred and twenty-five dollars a day for this service. I request that we pay them a hundred and fifty dollars a day. It is a very tough position, especially during assessments, as all of you are aware, and they do a real good job. So, I would request the Board to pay that, and that would come out of county books.
And that would be, did you say a hundred and twenty-five a day?
Hundred and fifty.
Hundred and fifty, okay. All right.
For what time period, Mike?
Justin, I'm gonna have to ask you.
I think it runs for the first, it's until the assessment's finalized, I think it's approximately three months after the assessments come out.
So, it would begin when they come out and run for three?
It wouldn't be every single day. They wouldn't be, only be paid when the meetings were held. So, they would set up certain times. Depends on the amount of citizens that would come in to request a review of their property.
Okay, gotcha. Any more discussion? I'll entertain a motion? I'll make a motion to approve the hundred and fifty dollars per day. Okay, have a second?
I second it.
All right, start the voting, Mr. Early?
Yeah.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next on the agenda is Hills and Prairie Department paving. Entertain a motion. And move forward with it or?
I'll do with the lowest bid.
Thanks, B. I was just wanting to give a little update. What we did is went out for sealed bids. During this process, received seven bids. One was not in conformity, one was taken out, fifty-two. We reached out to them to try to get some other information. Didn't feel like it was a very good bid, so we went through the process to eliminate that one. We do have a low bidder. And what I would do is request that staff be allowed to work, to staff to contract and accept this bid, and to procreate the funds, not modify the C.
Okay.
You wanna make that motion?
All right. Have a motion? I have a second? Second. Okay, start the voting, Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yeah.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Could I clarify one thing? That would be option A for the full project?
Option A?
There was, we bid it out as two, two project, we bid it out as two options. Option A would be paving the full lot, and then option B would be paving just the back lot.
Okay. You want, we need to change the motion?
I have a motion just to clarify that it was for option A.
Okay.
Yes, I would, I would make option A.
Option A?
Second.
Second. Okay, start the voting, Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Discussion, could I, could I ask one question?
Yes.
To me, pretty much, option A, the whole thing was cheaper than a lot of option B, correct?
That's correct. The issue, the issue with the, that, the one that bid, just to be completely honest with you, we reached out to them. It didn't make sense when you have
That must vary.
You have five, you know, four people that were within a few thousand dollars of each other.
Then you got one less than half.
Then it, we reached out to them several times, and were not able to get a call back, and it was a, the bid was a lump sum, and there was some difficulty for us to trust that bid, so we decided to kick that out.
Okay.
Any more discussion? Okay, Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yeah.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And next on the agenda is old business, the nature of conservancy tax exemption. Entertain a motion to do anything on it or?
I make a motion at this point to not go down that road.
Make a motion to no? Can I have a motion for no on the taxes exemption? Have a second?
Second.
Okay, start the voting, Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yeah.
Mr. Moore?
Yeah.
And I vote yes. Next on the agenda is the road abandonment. We want to make a motion to advertise for a public hearing. Is that correct, Mr. Watson?
That's correct.
I think Mr. Early is gonna make that motion.
Mr. Early?
I think Mr. Newman has a couple things to say first.
Okay, Mr. Newman?
Good evening.
Your motion, if approved, would be for a public hearing on January sixth.
January sixth, okay.
That'll, that'll give us the required thirty days to post notice and advertise.
Okay.
Just a reminder, this is the end of Wade Road between current maintenance and Big Reed. There's two landowners, Mr. and Ms. Slaughter and Ms. Lorgin, and they are doing a reciprocal agreement between them to give each other access to, through and to their properties. And also, last month, there was a discussion concerning the small cemetery that is on the Slaughter property. And it would have access to that as well.
Okay.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newman.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Can you hear me okay?
I can.
I have spoken with the property owners. I'm comfortable with the easements that they've, the mutual easements between the two. So, I will make a motion to abandon that portion of Wade Road.
Clarify, for public hearing on the motion, on the request abandoned?
That's right. I'm sorry, Steve. The public hearing in our January meeting for the abandonment of the road.
Okay, have a motion? I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I'll start the voting with Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yeah.
And I vote yes. And next on the agenda is grants for nonprofits. Mr. Moore, you have?
I will. I'll make a motion that we approve for, yeah, seventy-five hundred for the sixteen heritage, two thousand, the Carroll County Geology, two thousand, the Hope Incorporated, five thousand, and the library, fifteen hundred.
Okay, have a motion to?
And Webb Southern.
Webb Southern was?
Five thousand.
Five thousand?
Yes, sir.
Okay, have a motion for the grants? I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, start the voting, Mr. Early?
Yeah.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yep.
And I vote yes. And next on the agenda is the community center. Grants?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the nine thousand to the Lawford Community Center, five thousand to the Lampersburg Community Center, nine thousand to the Duxford Community Center, and six thousand to the Freeze Community Center. And I know we have budgeted twenty-five, and it's two over. I'll make a motion that the two come from the Sillwood House, if that's appropriate with Mr. Watson, and make that work, to cover the rest of that.
Okay. Have a motion? I'll have a second?
Second.
Okay, start the voting, Mr. Early?
Yeah.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, next on the agenda is Board Member Comments. I'll start with Mr. Bryant.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank the staff and for all they do, keeping everything running smoothly, and I know tomorrow's election day, so if you hadn't voted already, get out and vote. That's our civic duty, and let your voice be heard. All I got.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Mr. Horton?
Basically, I just want to say thank you for the staff, and appreciate the gentleman FEMA coming out tonight, just to be available to our citizens, and tell you thank you again for coming. Appreciate everything Mike and everything you guys are doing to help us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Horton. Mr. Early?
I just want to thank the Board for allowing me to call in for the meeting tonight. I'm sorry I could not be there. I wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Early. Mr. Collins?
Yeah, just echo everything everybody else has said, just to thank Stephen again for coming. We wish you and Mickey the best in the business. I know that's tough work. It's something you can never leave. I've never been there, but you weren't there, I don't think, so. It's hard work, and for your dad and our friends with him, we know his health, his health issues are stressful for him, but we're happy to see you still out there on social media, active, and we just appreciate everything you do for our community.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Mr. Moore?
And as an elder, I will say to the Board, he's not afraid to call you out either. But that's a good thing. You appreciate that, you know. But yeah, thank you for coming, and you do tell your dad, and I said, hey, you're a great Board Member and a great citizen of this community. And I just want to echo what this Board has said, you know, everybody get out and vote and express your rights to be able to do that. And thank the Board for all they do, and the staff for taking care of the employees as they do, and look forward to, hopefully, everybody have a happy holiday and good Thanksgiving. And I do have one good tidbit of information. I'll let Mike discuss it more during County Ministerial's comments, but we are excited to, got the Community Action Grant for broadband, and you see all this stuff on social media about Carroll County don't ever get nothing as far as broadband, so we did secure, I think, what, five million dollars for an extension with Citizens, so that's very exciting. I know it'll for an extension with citizens, so that's very exciting. I know it'll, it'll benefit our citizens moving forward and help us get not where we should be, but get us closer to where we need to be, so with that being said, thank y'all for your time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
I also want to thank the board and everyone, all the county board we work with, and definitely appreciate you calling in my phone and participating. The emergency services, everybody, the hurricane has done a great job. We have a thinker representative here. Appreciate you coming in. If anyone in the community still needs some help or assistance, and hasn't been able to talk to anyone, just contact us at the, at the county. We'll get you in touch with the right person you need to. And we do thank Mr. McCraw for coming, and you probably have been in business long enough, and we appreciate you and your father's service. Everything that you all do for the community. And of course, tomorrow is the last of days, so don't forget to vote, and I hope everyone has a good Thanksgiving. And good to you, Mr. Watson.
Okay, one of the items I just wanted to bring up is a recent announcement for the rural development grant. Citizens Telephone Cooperative received announcement, official announcement for a five thousand, five million dollar grant to provide five or to approximately eighteen hundred homes and twenty-two businesses in Carroll County. This will be in the Laurel Fort, Duxford area. Hopefully, we'll be able to, citizens will be able to narrow it down to exact number and where those locations will be, but this will be a good step toward providing around those areas and an area to grow for as well. Also, we discussed the Department of Housing and Community Development to kick off, and they obviously granted, we received a couple years ago. This grant was total for a little over a billion dollars that will provide approximately four hundred homes service in the public gap area. So it's been a long time coming, but, you know, it takes you months to get everything funded on that, but hopefully, we see some construction behind it. Good news. And other than that, Virginia five hundred, every time I go up and down the mountain, I want to stop and get something. It's my getaway, so I appreciate you all doing this work, so I thank you for watching, be better, and don't quit making hot dogs.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Mr. Durbin?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nothing other than to say what's already been said by the board. I hope everyone will go vote tomorrow if they haven't already, and I hope everyone has a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, sir. Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Have a motion? I have a second?
Second.
Start the vote, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Collins? Mr. Early?
Yes.
And I vote yes.